Okay. This is the September 19, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board. It's now two minutes after seven and we are convening. Present is Herman Lilia, Terry Duffy, and Tom Mekas. At this point Hank Betts is not present. And we're going to convene the meeting for the purpose of a public hearing. And I'll read the notice of the public hearing that was published twice in the Gloucester Daily Times on November 5th and on November 12th. Rockport Planning Board Public Hearing Notice for Amendment to Planning Board Rules and Regulations pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 41, Section 81-Q. The Rockport Planning Board will hold a public hearing for a proposal to amend the Rockport Planning Board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Rockport, Massachusetts by inserting a checklist titled Site Plan Review for Major Construction Projects Plans and Submittal Checklist which specifies required plant contents and applicable materials that must accompany a site plan review submittal for those projects designated by the Town of Rockport zoning by law as being major construction projects. The public hearing will be held during a duly noticed public meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 19 in Conference Room A of the Town Hall Building located at 34 Broadway, Rockport, Mass. The text of the proposed amendment and any supplemental materials and/or exhibits are available to be inspected at the Planning Board Office located in the Town Annex Building during regular business hours. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard in regard to the proposed amendment should appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated. Signed, Jason L. Shaw, Planning Board Chairman. So with that, I will ask if there's a motion to open the public hearing.
Is it moved?
A motion? Let me just, I just have to do this now, repeat who's moving and seconding because Eileen is having trouble.
Tom is moving.
Tom, Tom Mekas moves and Herman Lilia seconds the motion to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Toby, do you have some, something you want to say?
Yes.
You want to go up to the microphone, please?
Toby Arsenian, is it on? Is it working?
Is it green? Does it show green?
No, it shows red.
Okay, push that button in the front and it'll become green.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street.
Hold on Toby. David, are we on? Is Toby on the speakers?
Let me try to speak a little bit.
Okay.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. All duly noticed in the paper and so forth and I imagine, although I don't remember that you said you were holding this public hearing at your last meeting, but I don't recall anyone saying that the proposed, you know, the proposed revisions, if that's what you wish to call them, would be on file or where. Was anything said to that effect?
Well, I don't know if it was said at the meeting, but it was said in the public notice.
I don't believe it was said at the public meeting. I think you would recall and I hope I would recall. And I think to ask people to comment on something that they may not have seen, you know, I could ask you to read it through start to finish and you would probably object, but how is one reasonably supposed to comment on so much and all of the particulars? Just having glanced at it briefly, you know, and speaking from ignorance, not my fault, having not had a chance to review it, you know, I can see things that, you know, might possibly, and I'm sure I'm missing many, you know, be included. Is there anything about tanks underground?
You know Toby, I don't know, but I just, well, let me just answer him and then I'll... The public notice, which is for people like you who are not on the board, is, says specifically that this is, these are available, the guidelines were available for inspection at the Town Hall Annex prior to this meeting. So that's, and that was published twice. So that's, and also posted. So that's sufficient notice, I believe, for your knowledge. If you have some specific comment, then make it.
I just gave one. I just gave one and I'm pointing out that while you've met the legal standard, you know, it's really, you know, not fair and square in my view. But anyway, we proceed. I asked if there's anything here about underground tanks.
Did you want to say, address that?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say, Toby, we've been talking about this for a couple of months.
I know.
In our meetings.
It's been referred to in passing, not the actual animal produced.
Well, actually it has because when we, when we were doing the site plan review, we talked about this extensively in connection with the major construction projects. It was, it's been around for months and months now. So it's not like a new thing. I drafted this with the Planning Board's assistants, you know, back last spring. So I, and you're at pretty much every meeting, so I don't think that's being fair. But to answer your question about underground tanks, you mean fuel tanks?
Or other, any sort of tanks.
Well, that's, that's pretty much what you would have, is underground fuel tanks. And there are a lot of things here under the various headings, but I think underground fuel tanks are usually in connection with gas stations at this point.
I think you'd better ask for them because you've asked for everything else under the sun. On the off chance it might be interesting or relevant.
But this is a checklist, isn't it?
This is a checklist. Right, this is a checklist.
It would be on a plan. Somebody would have to have that on a plan.
Would they?
Yes, and it would be a plan of any underground utilities.
Okay, if you're convinced that they would have to have...
But this is just a checklist saying if you do have that, it has to be on a plan for us to see.
Okay, that, that...
But there's other, and then there's other consequences too. So the fire chief would have to be involved, the building inspector, and of course if it was in the, in the, anything to do with conservation, they would also be involved. So there's overlapping jurisdiction on, on that. This is just a checklist saying if you come in to us, you know, for site plan review, these are the items that we're looking for. And what precipitated this, you were witness to Frank there, well, I can't remember his last name.
McCarthy.
The one right up the street here on...
Quaint Rockport Slum.
Whatever. That thing, he didn't actually, he wasn't really following or he couldn't understand what the different plans is that we needed or wanted and therefore, and he wasn't the only one, there's been others, but that's a, that's a good example. And here, if he had a checklist, we could say, look, you don't have A, B, and C, so we're not going to even schedule a hearing. You know what I'm saying?
I would say you let him get away with bloody murder, but that's beside the point now. Anyway, existing site plan features, and as I said, I've not had a chance to properly review it. You're asking for rights of way easements and so forth. I think you should also ask for Chapter 91 licenses on the property, just so that you can be sure that if those are something that should be there, that they actually exist.
What did you say? Chapter 91?
Chapter 91 licenses, tidelands licenses. Again, it's not your jurisdiction, but a lot of these...
I was going to say, that's outside of a jurisdiction.
Well, you can't shuffle it off quite that easily because in their regulations, it's the Planning Board for local authorities that's supposed to comment.
Can I, let me just say something. This is a public hearing, so this is a chance for anybody to say whatever they want. We'll listen. We're not going to necessarily vote on this tonight, but we'll hear your comments and decide at the next meeting whether they're worthy of incorporating or not.
Good.
So if you have any comments, this is the time to say them.
I'll give you your pen back. Although I'm sure I don't deserve it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have offered a few comments and, you know, if you're going to continue it at another meeting, perhaps you would leave the hearing open so that people could, could comment more, you know, again, having had a chance to review it. Anyway, I think that the Chapter 91 license is relevant and you should ask for it.
Okay. Anything else?
As I say, I've not had a chance properly to review it.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? No one else? Okay, I'm going to look for a motion to close the public hearing. It is now 7:12.
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing made by Terry Duffy.
Tom seconds.
Tom Mekas seconds the motion to close. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries and the meeting, public hearing is closed and we'll take the comments made by Toby and look into them and then on the, at our next meeting, we'll vote on whether we want to include this as part of our site plan review.
Checklist.
Checklist. Part of the checklist, right. Okay. So most, the public hearing's closed. We've got about 15 minutes before our regular meeting starts, so we'll wait till the regular meeting. It is now 7:30. Meeting will come to order. This is the September 19, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board. All members of the Planning Board are present and we just concluded a public hearing. Now we're going to go into the regular meeting and first item of business will be any public discussion on any topic. If there is any public discussion, now's the time to make it. Toby.
Two items, racing the clock. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. The last time in public comment period, I spoke about the community preservation appropriation for an affordable housing survey. And at the end, I spoke with Mr. Lilia, who is named as one of the people who would be a consultant to the hired consultants. And Mr. Lilia said he knew nothing about it. So I assume that was not a lie, but a senior moment. Do you want me to read you where you're listed along with the other distinguished citizens?
You may very well be correct, but we haven't had any activity at this point with regard to that. And the only communication that I recall having with Mitch Viera, Town Administrator, was did I support the allocation of this money for this purpose? And I did. But we haven't met as a group.
That's, you know, two pieces missing the point in the middle, which is that you're listed as one of the people who are going to advise the consultants. So when I...
And that's true, but I, at the point when I did that, I was also chairman of this board and I don't know whether that passes to the current chairman or whether I am still the individual. I don't know the answer to your question really.
I do. These were the people named in the, the application for the community preservation funds, so you're one of them. And you're not named as Chair of the Planning Board, you're named as Herman Lilia and all of your degrees given. And don't count his response as part of my comment.
Well, you're eliciting a response.
That's not my fault. Anyway, I see that you're going to be asked to approve an easement on town property at 54 Marmion Way. I've already commented on it at the Finance Committee and actually my comments took some effect because they're going to ask the selectmen to ask for some actual money, which wasn't done before. These things were given away for a dollar, believe it or not. And we're going to get something like $200 or $250 a year, thanks to my needling, among other things. But here we are, you know, and you're asked to advise quite properly on easements and, you know, yet when it comes to selling town property, tax title property, there's no public process. And why wouldn't you be consulted on that since you're great authorities on what might not be valuable to the town? And please take it from there and tell the selectmen, who pay no attention to my comments, that you should be consulted along with other town boards when they come up on selling tax title property. Thank you.
Thank you Toby. Any other public comments? Venus?
Yeah. Is this thing going okay?
You want to, yeah, it's going. You want to say your name and address, please?
Z Seppel, 92 Granite Street. I think, I want to say that I read the unauthorized or disruptive conduct section that I read at the last Planning Board meeting. I went home and verified that it is indeed according, verbatim from the Mass General Laws. So I know that Jason, you told me that in answer to my question the last time, but thank you, it was verbatim. So the key thing seems to be avoiding disruption of a public meeting. And we guess we'll just have to wait and see whether if I whisper to Toby about something you folks consider that disruptive. Anyway, I will get back now to the comments at a public hearing which we just had, and I'd like to read what you have on that. During a public hearing, a member of the public shall be limited to one three-minute comment period. So the question I have there is it says that you can allow further discretion on whether or not that will be extended. So are you talking about the one three-minute period so that you could have maybe possibly one five-minute period? Or are you talking about having somebody does three minutes and then raising their hand and getting up again and you seeing fit to hear them again? In other words, are you firm in your position of only allowing one public comment period during a hearing?
Well, you're asking me hypothetical questions.
I don't think that's hypothetical at all.
Well, because it's, the rule says what it says. And if, if there's someone's in the middle of an important point and the three minutes has expired, it's within the discretion of the Planning Board to allow that person to continue. And that's all it says. So we're not, we're not there yet and we're not there now. So, you know, when it happens, it happens.
But I think what Venus is asking is, so that, that would be option A. But let's say somebody does three minutes and sits down.
I understood.
Will they be allowed to have an addition three minutes later?
Yeah, I understood. And the answer will have to, have to come up later because, for example, if during your three minutes, or anyone's three minutes, something is said and then someone gets up and says something that's completely contradictory or different, if that person, if the first person has some kind of documentary proof that establishes their point, under those circumstances, the board may, and I underline may, may allow that person to address that point. But again, that's the kind of thing that you can't make a decision on until the issue is before the board and it's not before the board yet. So that's, that's what's called discretion. The board has discretion to do that. Most of the time that discretion won't be exercised because it's unnecessary.
I will comment that I just can't see how you can mind read somebody that's raising their hand and say, I think he said what he had to say and I'm not going to recognize him to say it. Or on the other side of the coin...
By the way, you've got 15 more seconds.
Well, thank you. I'm going to bring an egg timer in from now on, so I'll be able to keep track.
Be fine.
I just, I, I'll talk more about it the next time. I don't think you can limit people to a three, one session and do it under your rules.
All right. Okay. Any other public comment? Anyway, let's move on to the minutes of September 5, 2019. Those were sent to everyone by email. I don't know who's had a chance to read them.
I did and...
I did.
One thing is, I wasn't here.
You weren't here, right. So we take you out.
Yeah.
Okay.
End of comments.
And if there are any, you know, any other comments, additions, deletions, let's, we can make them.
Yeah, I have two or three things.
Okay.
On the Kleinfelder paragraph, page two.
Okay.
The last sentence.
Wait, I'm looking for that. Page two. Kleinfelder, right, I see that.
Starting Shaw spoke on the last sentence. This is on the infiltration issue.
Yeah.
It includes the infiltration issue, but it's not only about that. So I would recommend changing is on to includes.
Yeah, I think that's probably more accurate too. Okay. Anything else?
Moving on, on the final page, public discussion, Toby's comments. Second line. He said he thought Rockport was out of the velocity zone. I believe what he said was he thought Bear Skin Neck and Long Beach were taken out of the velocity zone. Not all of Rockport. Yeah.
At the selectors' request, we made a letter of map revision.
So Bear Skin Neck and what was the other?
Bear Skin Neck and Long Beach were taken out of the velocity zone. I think that is what Toby said.
What he said.
And the other thing is that...
The question here however is, she is typing the word she hears. She, this is verbatim. So there may be errors in brama, there may be errors in sentence structure, there may be errors in content, but this is what I think she heard.
Well, I'm telling you what I remember.
Yeah, well, you know, this is, but this is always the issue with minutes.
That's tricky.
And, and, I mean, you have to have kind of a common sense approach because sometimes her, she may not hear something clearly. Hopefully these microphones will help with that and...
Well, could we go back and check the verbatim in the recording?
Yeah, I mean, if it's that...
Well, that's the issue that I would...
This isn't like a trial where every word is really, really important or could be.
No, and that's what I fully agree. So that's basically what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, she's the one who's listening in the earphones and if, you know, she is hearing a certain order of words, then she is typing the order of words as she hears them. If, if it's confusing to her, that's a different story and then checking up on whatever the tape happens to, to have on it, that might be appropriate.
I seem to recall too that, I mean, to say Rockport as a whole doesn't make a lot of sense. It really doesn't make sense. So, yeah. So I agree with you that Bear Skin Neck and I recall that too, so...
You can say parts of Rockport to kind of hedge this, but we don't want anybody to read this and think that Toby said all of Rockport.
This is, you know, this is a public discussion period and it's not critical. So, anything else?
Well, we missed the comments made in the first public discussion session.
Yeah, that was because, that was just a technical issue because the recorder wasn't on, but that's not happening anymore.
Okay. And Toby had repeated some of that at this meeting, so, okay.
Herman, did you have, did you have some corrections?
No, no, I have nothing to offer. No. I was willing to deliver.
Okay. All right, so we'll make those corrections and then submit these for approval or we can say...
Move to approve it.
Move to, move, motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Yes.
Well, who make, who's going to make the mo, I'm not making a motion. Someone making it?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Herman Lilia makes a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Hank Betts seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Planning Board Recommendation Concerning the Easement on Town Property at 54 Marmion Way. You should have received a couple of things on this. First thing would have been a, a kind of a packet of information from Mitch Viera, you know, assorted information, a letter to him from the property owner was the first thing, but it wasn't, wasn't signed. And then a diagram of a wall, proposed layout, and then a kind of, an image showing where the proposed wall would be. And although I don't think this image is particularly helpful knowing, having gone to the property. And then, and then also a, a survey of the property area. And then finally at the last page will be the standard that we're looking at this for. This is a bylaw that allows the town to allow encroachment on town property by private property and the town essentially grants an easement. Our role with this, in addition to the Finance Committee, but our role is a little different because our role is to make a recommendation which must determine that there are no foreseeable long-range planning impacts as a result of granting the easement and authorizing the board of selectmen to execute the instruments. So that's kind of our role is to see whether the easement could impact planning in the future. I have to say that Tom and I went to this property this morning and actually looked at it. The owner happened to be there. He came out and talked, talked with us about his plans. And essentially what he wants to do is extend, his property is on the, is opposite, it's not on the ocean side of Marmion Way, it's on the other side. And he's got a partial stone wall, maybe it's a couple of feet high, that's existing. And then to the south of that is a kind of a, it's an area of the property has a little bit of a grade where there's no wall at all. And what he wants to do is take the existing wall and essentially extend that to the south. And originally he said that he wants to make it approximately the same height as the existing wall, which is approximately two feet. But however, during our conversation, he said that he wanted to increase the height of the entire wall to approximately three feet, primarily because he's concerned about, you know, ocean intrusion. It's already happened once, a couple of years ago in 2018, where he ended up having, you know, rocks deposited on his front lawn. And so the object, the primary object of this wall is to stop that from happening in the future as best, as best as it can. The other thing that he said was that he had no objection to, if the town does grant him an easement, to build this extension, that he has no objection to incorporating language in the easement which would allow the town to actually remove the wall that he builds to maintain Marmion Way or do some work that may, you know, be required in the future. I mean, if we're, if all this talk and projection about rising seas and climate change turn out to be correct, you know, in 10 years, the town may have to do some major work on Marmion Way because apparently dislocation on Marmion Way gets socked pretty badly in storms because it's right on a cove there and the water just comes right up. Very amenable guy. He, you know, just, he showed us where the property line, markers were. His existing wall is already on town property. This will also be on town property. And so this has already been in front of the Conservation Commission and you also have their findings relating to that. So that's kind of an update. I'll open it up to anybody who wants to say anything about it.
How did, how did the original Walgeld get built on town property, do you know?
Yeah, he talked... Yeah, he talked about that. I think the, um, whoever did the original construction just made a mistake. Essentially, that was it.
So, and nobody, and somehow, the town, whoever, let that happen without comment?
No, actually, Hank, he had to remove some of the wall, um, that before because of that, so, now that, he did have to, you know, he did have to remove it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that part of the wall was removed because the Conservation Commission did not want a solid wall that would deflect water onto his neighbor.
What, the, the part that's, that we're talking about now?
No, earlier when the, when it was built.
I thought also it was because he was on town property, you know?
I didn't get that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, anyway.
Yeah.
It was removed.
Yep.
Personally, when I look at this, I, it's, because it's the town, why, why should it be different? Because it's town land that he's, he's encroached upon versus, um, me as a, as a neighbor encroaching on my property. I wouldn't, the town, the government wouldn't let that happen, and, uh, and for whatever reason, that's happened here, and it's kind of like, one could say he ought to tear down the wall, because he knowingly put it on town property so he could not lose any of his property. That's one way of looking at it, and that may be correct or incorrect. But in any event, he's on, he ended up knowingly on town property, and if, uh, so he could tear down the wall, or he could pay, pay to, if the, I don't know how that works, whether the town just lets him do it or not, uh, said, well, it's okay, just a little bit of land.
I think the finance committee and Toby eliminated it.
I got, I got all that. I got what Toby said, and he's right. Uh, it's, why is a town giving, you know, if the town gives, doesn't give each other stuff, they don't give me stuff. Uh, and they should, um, there ought to be some kind of, there should be something more than just saying it's okay. That's how I see it.
Yeah, our, our job, just to, and I don't want to interrupt, is just, we, we're to make a recommendation either for or against, or whatever, so that's our...
But, but, it's not about whether it's right or wrong, it's about whether there's foreseeable long-range planning impacts. The other decisions is selectmen and finance and all that stuff. Our, our, you know, jurisdiction essentially is only whether the recommendation from us, if it's yes, would have long-term, uh, planning impacts.
To me, the long-term planning impact is, it's, it's an example of, we've let somebody do that here, and I want to do it over there, and...
So that's, so then it's, you're setting a precedent, that's what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, setting a precedent.
So that's, that's, I'm on the same, I'm on the same wavelength as that. You're now setting a precedent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I understood from our conversation that it was the previous owner who had installed the wall on top, on property. So before we cast too many stones at the wall of this current owner, we should think about that.
Well, that, you know, that may be true, and I don't, I don't think the existing wall is, just to be what I think is the issue. It's not, the existing wall is not an issue. However, wherever that wall happens to be, it's this extension that's, this current owner wants to put up that's, that's the issue.
The part of the existing wall is also on town property.
That's correct, right, right. Basically, this entire, this entire wall, the existing wall is on town property, and this portion of the wall would be on town property. Do you want to show, um, the rest of the board where, where that would be, or?
It's hard to see. This is an old drawing from the previous wall that was removed, and then...
Well, I'll tell you, if you look at your, what you got from Mitch, I think it's the...
This is current, yes?
Hmm?
What we have is current.
Is current, right, this is current. If the second to the last page is, I mean, it's very hard when you're just looking at a map like this, but if you hold this map up, um, and, um, you can see Marmion Way, and you'll have, um, Straitsmouth Way should be on your right, Marmion Way's at the bottom, and there's, there's a, um, there's a front porch when you're coming from the property line going back toward the house. There's a front porch there, and then to your left are some field stones in the grass, and that's what you're looking at there. So, that's, that dark shaded area where those field stones are is the area that currently has no wall at all. That's the area that he wants to put up a wall. It's that dark with the hash marks, that's where they, that's the area at issue. And like I said, it's on the, it's on the opposite side of Marmion Way from the, from the ocean, so, yeah. Anyway. Any other thoughts on this?
No, I mean, it, it says foreseeable long-range planning, which, you know, is more than simply the road. It's what might ultimately be built there, whatever the need might be. It's pretty hard to look far down the road with regard to long-range planning for this particular site. I mean, we're really speaking out of ignorance because we really don't know what the long-range plan is going to be.
Yeah, I, I think the, but you're just talking about the site. We, I'm talking about precedents.
Yeah, that, that's one aspect of it, and I'm, yes, I'm talking about the site. So there were two, two parts of this, at least.
Chairman?
But we can't, we can't know more than we currently know, as far as I can say. We haven't come up, we haven't theorized as to what a long-range plan might be that would in fact be incumbent upon by virtue of allowing him to build the wall. I mean, no one has suggested one. I don't have one to suggest, so we're sort of voting in the dark. But I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying that there was a lack of information.
With toiling in the dark on that subject, and that's not, that's not the issue, as I see it, and that's, again, it's a precedence, and you're not just saying, can't do it, and be done with it, and then you can move on, personally.
That's your, that's your sense?
Yeah. That's like, you know, Gloucester, remember they had a big building in Gloucester recently that, it took them years. They finally got a guy to tear down part of a building in Gloucester, a big one. They finally won. Anyway, it's that sort of thing. You can't let people, you want to try and avoid that from happening, where, where something happens, and, oh gee, it was a mistake, and it cost me $200,000 to fix it. Well, fix it.
Well, Hank, let me ask you a question. What, what if the easement that he has specifically said that, if the, because I, the only time I can see this becoming an issue, it is kind of a small intrusion on the town's property, but if, if there's ever any roadwork that needs to be done on Marmion Way because of the ocean issues, um, that, you know, it may, the town may at some point in the future require that he move this, or they may have to move it. And if he, if he consents to that and realizes that, I don't care what you put up or how much you spend, the town can come in and ask you to move it later, and you can't complain. Would that change your...
No.
Okay.
Chairman?
Why should it? Well, I'm just asking, yeah, you know.
The one long-range issue I thought of was that at some point, we may want to underground the utility lines, because they are vulnerable in that area, and they have had problems. And, uh, two houses down, I believe, they had it at their own expense, put the utility lines underground. I don't know when it could happen, or who would pay for it, but that might be a future thing to consider, and so we should judge whether this easement changes anything with the capability to underground the lines. I doubt that it does, since there's enough width there between the wall and the road, but that's the long-range thing I thought of.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
This, I have a question. Looking at that, doesn't he have room on his own property to put that wall?
Yes.
So put it on his own property?
He, he has, he has his, he has room, Ruth, but, um, it would, it would be a, the wall would look a little odd. He could do it.
Well, look on the Rockport.
I mean, it's protecting his property. It should be his wall on his property.
Right, yeah.
Exactly.
There's not a, as you're, it's not a, there's not some kind of reason, like if, if, if someone like this came to the board with deals, there'd have to be a reason to get his, a, a variance, for instance. There's not a reason to change anything.
Has, has this, do we know if this has occurred already?
I don't know.
In other words, has, has the selectman grant, not at this particular site, anyway?
Not this one, with some other one.
Okay.
I don't know. Do you know that? Ruth, have, have the selectmen ever granted one of these, these easements to someone?
Nothing happened on the voice, but I don't know.
You don't know?
This is the first since the process changed.
Say that again?
When they had to go to town meeting, you referred to him.
Oh, right, that's right, so this, okay.
Whether it was or not, that was a challenge.
Good point.
This is the first since then.
Okay, so, um, any further discussion? No further discussion. Does anybody have, uh, it sounds like Hank, you're, for the reasons you stated, you're opposed? Yeah?
I'm opposed.
You're, Terry's opposed. Anything to add to what Hank said, Terry?
No, he's, it took him 20 words to say what I would say, too, but, yeah.
Okay, I want, I want to try to figure out what those two words are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tom?
I'm kind of torn here. I don't, I don't think it's a, an issue, but there's a precedent.
It's all precedent stuff.
Well, I think the precedent's already been set, in other words, I don't think this is a first example. Um, you know, if we were to go back and do a history on it, see what, see how many similar situations had occurred in town, I suspect that we would find there were probably several.
Yeah.
And there will be several more. So I'm not so worried about the precedent. I don't see it as being too much of an encroachment on public property. And if the town really needs it, they'll come back to him and say, hey, look, we're gonna move it. I mean, you've already said that he was willing to do that.
Yeah.
Um, but admittedly, if it's not down on paper, it has no meaning at a later point.
Yeah, what have to be incorporated in this?
They have to be incorporated into it, but I personally don't have any problem with it. I don't see it as major.
Well, it's kind of like, you're, Terry's against it, you're against it, Herman doesn't, is okay with it, and Tom is...
Where are you?
Well, I want to find out where you are.
I don't know.
You don't know, okay.
I mean, listen, listen.
I, I will, I'll tell you where I am.
The selectmen don't have to take our recommendation either.
No, they don't.
Or they could take the recommendation that we're stating and use that for their benefit to make a better negotiation.
Well, this is only a recommendation, but it's, it's important, and I would say that, um, I would be comfortable in recommending this, but with the proviso that the easement be very clear that if that, if this wall has to be removed for any reason required by the town, he's gonna remove it, and it's gonna be removed at his cost, and that's the risk he takes. If he doesn't want to build it because of that, well then, so be it, but it's gonna be up to him. We're not gonna end up 10 years from now, whoever owns the property having a fight with them about, well, I don't want to move the wall, blah, blah, blah. No, that's not gonna happen. It's gonna be very, it should be very clear.
Yes, it will happen.
And that, and that's what, well, it's, you know...
It can, it can well happen, as you say.
It's possible, but it, I wanted to, I would recommend that it be very clear and expressive about that ability. So, under those circumstances, I would recommend it, and maybe, maybe what we want to say is if we have, everyone's got differences of opinion, is that the, that the board really can't come up with a single recommendation?
Well, again, the only thing we have written, or that I've seen, is this thing from Mitch, which doesn't talk about any of that business.
Well, the only thing it does talk about, when it says future planning, I would consider that long-range planning would be, you know, the...
No, no, I'm talking about what you were just saying, that it has this, this phrase in it that he has to tear it down if, if we need it, or whatever. I don't see any of that here.
No, you're right, it's not there, but it does, um...
So based on that, I would say, that's not what our recommendation is. Our recommendation is just based on what's actually here.
Well, you know, Terry, you're right, it's not there, but I think that it would be, I guess I'm suggesting that because it would be less, it would have less impact on long-range planning if, if that could be one of the conditions.
I agree, so tell them to put the condition in, and then we can vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, but that's just me.
No, I understand, that's what I'm saying. So if that was the case, tell them to get that in writing, and then we can have a recommendation based on that, but based on what we see here.
Yeah, but we could, we could recommend to them that the only way we're going to recommend it is if that language be in the, in easement.
Right.
Otherwise, we would not recommend it.
Then that might change somebody like me. I don't know about Hank, because I, I understand what Hank's saying, but that might change my mind, too.
So, yeah, so we're saying there's something different, again, we're saying something, there's something different between the town as opposed to me and you, if I lived next door to you and I put my wall on your property, what would you, and it's no big deal, because you don't use that part of that property anyway.
Yeah.
It's like a thousand feet from your house. You, you might actually want to take me to court.
Well, you know, you're right. I mean, this is, uh, this is a little like law that, I guess it was approved at the town meeting that allows the town to do this, so it is different, you're right. But that's what, that's what the town voters wanted to do, so...
Well, I mean, it, it was an effort on the part of the selectmen to not have to go back to the town every time someone came with this kind of a recommendation. That part was approved. This had nothing to do with this particular event.
Yeah, no, you're right.
It only had to do with the law or the, the ability of the selectmen to make these judgments on their own with our assistance.
So, if this, if they hadn't adopted this bylaw, this issue that we're dealing with, with this particular wall at 54 Marmion, would have had to gone to a town meeting and been voted on by, you know, everyone at town meeting. So, they, they kind of eliminated that, so...
That's what you had up there. Where was that from?
So, in any event, let me just, let me just recap, because I think we're at, kind of at the end here. Would, is there, is there a majority of the board that would, uh, recommend that this be allowed with the condition that the town be able, for whatever reason, it wants to remove this wall if it needs to do that for its utility lines, for, um, improving the road or anything like that, and that the owner has no, essentially has no property right to insist that that wall stay there? Would that be acceptable?
That would make me comfortable, yeah.
Okay.
So, well, well, if I, if, my property taxes are based on my land, right? So, we've actually given him, the nice thing about my house, I have no land, so I, another, get a great view, but I pay lower taxes because I don't have land. Well, he's, he, this person has gained land, usable land.
Yeah, but according to the finance committee, though, he's, he's gonna be paying for it.
Well, okay, we didn't say that. He's gained usable land.
That's not, that's outside of our purview.
Yeah, the other thing, Hank, just so you know, the assessments are not based on square foot. It's based on buildable lot. So, I, I hear you about the 300 square feet, but honestly, assessment-wise, that doesn't make any difference.
You know, when I do this, I will draft a recommendation, I'll circulate it to the board members, and, you know...
We can look at it.
We can look at it and decide whether we want to approve it or not, okay?
Beautiful, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the A and R Deborah Hoole.
My name is Joe Small. I'm a land surveyor from Hancock Associates, and I prepare the plan.
Okay.
Basically, what you have here is a... Basically, what you have here is a survey.
Joe, let me just stop you for one second. I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I can't, I can't see your plan from.
Bring it up.
Yeah, come on. Yeah. And maybe you can lift the microphone up off the desk and hold it.
Okay.
Is that the same as the drawings that are on the table?
Yep.
Without the colors.
Yep.
What we have here is a survey of the property at 25 Penrin, Penrin Way, and the purpose of the survey is simply to convey a portion of this to the neighbor. What we have here is the original configuration of the property came about in 1948, based on this rather rudimentary plan. And you can see even in those days, it had this crazy little tail that went off into the, on the bottom property. And Ms. Hool basically doesn't have any use of that piece of property, and it is primarily used by the neighbor next door. So they've come to an agreement to basically convey that small piece over to them.
So let me just stop you for a second. That little tail, which on the first map, the older map.
Yep.
Is facing to our left. Is that the one to the left? The left of the map?
Yeah.
See, it's oriented differently on the two different maps. That's what I'm, that's all I'm saying. You're gonna turn it. Okay, good.
You thought we were gonna read it.
You need four hands there, Joe.
We can't read.
I think we can do without the.
Yeah.
So that is pretty much it. It doesn't really, it doesn't affect her area of zoning. It doesn't affect her frontage. It really, it's of no use to her at all. She doesn't wanna maintain it. She doesn't want the liability to anything that happens on it. So.
So Joe, on that map, where is Penrin Way?
This is Penrin Way, right here.
Okay.
It didn't exist in 1948. It has come in subsequently. So what we had to do was we had to survey that separately to know where it fit in relationship to the 1948 law lines. It was quite a survey, and I know that you've commented on the details.
I commented on all that, yeah.
Unfortunately, as a surveyor, it's our responsibility to make sure that we explain to future surveyors how we got to this thing. And there were so many monuments out there and so many inconsistencies with the, with the prior work that I had to be able to show. Someone picks it up in 50 years, they'll know which drill hole I used, which iron rod I used, and not try to have to figure it out again.
When I, when I spoke with Joe about this, I was a little puzzled by all the little cartoon balloons, so to speak, on this map, and what they had to do with the A and R, and apparently, really, nothing.
Absolutely nothing.
Absolutely nothing. There, it's just that little sliver of property that's being conveyed from the top lot to parcel A, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
And I know that a lot of surveyors don't necessarily go to this level of detail, but I, it's, I think it was necessary.
I've seen it. So, so how does somebody go from Penrin Way down to this other lot that's at the bottom of the bigger map?
There's an existing easement that runs along the wall.
And where is that on your?
You know, I didn't show it on here. I, I wasn't really, there's not, this conveyance wasn't affecting the right of way.
Yeah, except that you have all this other detail in there showing all the drill holes, and you don't show something that is, you know, actually on the ground.
Right. In hindsight, I probably would've shown it, but I guess I wasn't thinking that it was important for this conveyance.
Yeah. Okay. Guess I'm a little confused by that, but.
Well, it, it is that, that easement is the way that parcel A actually has access to.
That's right.
To a, yeah.
To their driveway.
Right. So, I mean, obviously, you know, within A and R, one of the factors is generally, when you're, certainly when you're creating a lot, you need to create a lot that has access on some kind of public way, right of way, traveled way, something to that effect, and that it be improved to a degree that would allow for vehicular traffic. So what you're saying is, we're looking at the map with parcel A, but parcel A on the map that you want us to approve and file, there's no access shown.
Well, remember that we're not actually creating any new legal.
No, I understand that, but we're also trying to, I guess, remedy some, or make things as clear as we possibly can. I know what you're saying, but we're not, and you probably didn't think, well, that's probably not important, 'cause we're not creating a lot. We're just kind of making, conveying this little sliver to one, from one property to the other. But.
I guess there've been attorneys looking at this thing, and it wasn't a concern to them.
Yeah. Well.
I'm not sure why it should be a concern for us.
Hmm? Well, Terry brought it up, and.
No, actually, Tom brought it up.
Well, Tom brought it up.
Tom brought it up. Tom's the one that pointed it out.
Well, I see on the town map, it's shown as an easement.
And then when I looked closer, I was like, oh, yeah, by the way, how are you supposed to get down there?
We've, we've discussed this kind of a situation many, many times. And we have argued over whether or not there is appropriate access to other lots. In this particular act, in this particular situation, we're paying no attention to that access. But, I mean, I, I say that just as a historical reference point, because we've argued extensively about this. In this particular situation, this is a transfer of a piece of property from one party to another, and in a sense, bears little on the access. It's just this transfer of this 2,100 square feet. But, given everything else we've said, it's a little bit odd to not be focusing on it, but, hey.
Or at least to show the existing right of way as it exists now, today.
Do you want me to add that? I can add that to the plan.
Well, okay. Look, here's the problem that we have. I mean, I, I agree that, I, I understand what you're saying. Well, we're just adding a sliver. The lot's already there. It doesn't matter. If, if you were creating parcel A, it would matter big time.
Yeah.
But you're not. But you're saying it doesn't matter, therefore, we don't have to show it. And technically, you're, you're right, but for, you're gonna file this map, this is gonna be on file, this is gonna be, and you've done a nice job of putting your, what you did on all these other corners there, it would seem to me that you would want to put this important feature on your map.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Just to tie into everything else?
If, if, if you want me to add that to the plan, I will add that to the plan.
I think, I think it really needs it. I, so, that, that being said, you did a great job on the rest of it. You really did.
Yeah, no, we did.
Yeah.
Do, do you think I can do it, and then do I need to attend another meeting in order to?
Well, you know, here's our dilemma. Did you wanna say something, Herm?
Well, it, it's that, right now, there's nothing on parcel A, right?
There's a house on lot, on parcel A. There is.
So they're already using it.
It's existing.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, and that, at right of way, is in use.
It exists.
That's right.
Right.
Then, if that's in use, then, then as the state has said in several cases, it's a way that's in use. We have no, and we don't even care whether it's on there. It would be nice if it were on there.
That's all I'm saying, just to have a complete, a complete plan. That's my argument.
Yeah. Well, he just, go ahead. Were you gonna say something, Hank?
No. It's not necessary, it's not needed for this A and R. However, you might want it to be complete and so forth, but it's just not needed.
Correct. As far as us making a determination, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's right.
For this, for this plan to be filed, in my, my view is that it should be complete. And particularly after all the other details are on there. I mean, it's very well done. Why not have the other one piece that needs to be complete?
Joe, let me ask you, following up on what Terry said, do you think it'll be, it'll be a better, more complete map if you show that right of way there?
Of course.
Okay. Why don't we do this? You're up against 21 days. I would entertain discussion that we, because we have to do this 'cause of the 21 days, that we deny this application without prejudice. Not gonna have you come back and pay another fee, and at the next meeting, come back with a map with the road, and we'll, it'll be.
The right of way.
With the right of way, and should be approved right of way.
Let me just say, how can we deny this? We, we might not like, but there's not a way there, but as Herm points out, it's in use and is there.
Well, I, I think.
And, I mean, we'll do whatever is easiest, but if someone wants to be real snit with us, they could say, screw you.
Yeah.
That's true, but Joe doesn't wanna be a snit.
Well, let me ask you this. Rather than denying it outright, can you do a contingent approval that I will add this and bring it back?
No, there is no. State law would doesn't allow it to.
There is no such a thing in the A and R.
Yeah, it's outside of a jurisdiction.
A, A and Rs are really black and white. Either we grant it or we deny it, and we've gotta do it within 21 days of when it's filed.
When was it filed?
Uh, this is it. This is the last meeting. If the next meeting, it'll be beyond 21.
Next meeting is 14 days from now, so it was.
It'll be beyond 21.
It was filed more than seven days ago.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's what we have to do.
Okay, so I can.
I mean, it's no harm, no foul to you. You just put the road on, come back, same map, boom.
Okay. Do I need to come to the next meeting?
You don't need to.
I think so.
No.
Now, you've explained it all.
No.
Just put the road on.
Okay.
Put the road on, give it to, we'll approve it, and then.
So we'll approve it the next meeting.
So. And don't show up.
Question. Will the easement be on the new deed?
I don't really know.
Probably not, because it already exists, and it's already, as part of their deed, that they already have rights to. So it probably won't be anything. It would just be a simple conveyance of a lot, and whatever rights exist are gonna go with the parcel.
Well, it, it already exists on the lot. What is the top lot called?
This is 25.
25. So the easement has to already exist on the 25D.
It does.
So, look, that's, yeah, but that's kinda beyond, we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah, so that, that part isn't gonna change. The only part that's gonna change is this conveyance of the existing, just that portion of the existing easement.
Lot 3230 currently doesn't have the easement on it, and now it will, if it becomes merged with parcel A, with piece A. The easement that goes with that new slice now goes on to 3230.
Who, who is the lot that has the benefit of it anyway?
Right.
So it's, all he's gonna do is show something that's already there, show it on the map, which will make a better map, which will make it if someone 20 years from now looks at it.
Well, wait a minute. Doesn't, what's the one at the bottom? Johnson?
Yeah, I don't know what rights they have in it. I don't think they have any.
It could be for the benefit of 3241.
Okay, because it, so it ends before, I mean, it ends just before their lot line?
I'd have to go back and, and read the deed exactly, but I don't believe they have rights to it. I'm not exactly sure what the purpose of this was, but I know that these guys, that's how they get access, is this way.
All right. So why don't we do this, not to belabor this anymore, just, someone make a motion to deny the, the map as it is currently drawn, deny approval of the map that is currently drawn, or disapprove it with the.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice for the applicant to return with a map that shows, same map that shows the road. So we need a motion to that effect from someone.
Right, so I'll make a motion to disapprove this plan as drawn without prejudice.
And to allow the applicant, which is part of that, to come back with them, with the map.
And to allow the applicant to come back, or to the applicant to resubmit with the current in-use easement drawn on the map.
Okay. So that's a motion by Terry Duffy. Does anybody second that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Herm. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So just, Joe, just for the next meeting, submit a new map. You don't have to be here. And.
Appreciate it, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tom, the troublemaker.
Okay. That's the last item on the agenda that requires any action. I put down, actually, there's also a, I'll let you talk about the article, Herm, that you, but I, last meeting we weren't here.
Yeah.
I, I distributed the Kleinfelder report, the updated report about the state of the wastewater treatment system in the town of Rockport. And I just put it on here if anybody had anything they wanted to say about it. Otherwise, I think, Ruth, you said that something more is gonna happen on this.
We're looking at having a meeting with the DPW commissioners, the selectmen, and planning board to look at the Kleinfelder report sometime in October.
Okay. Thank you. So I put it on there. If anybody wants to talk about it, say anything about it. Obviously, has an implication for the TOD, because that's discussed in the Kleinfelder report as a consumer of wastewater treatment in the future.
Yeah, well, we don't.
Anyway.
We don't know how many spaces would be occupied by TOD.
They, they make assumptions, you know. So, nobody has anything to say then?
I do.
Okay.
There's a table in there that indicates that the excess capacity, even accounting for the TOD and five granite, is less than 0.1% of capacity.
Wait, say that again, Tom?
The excess capacity, after accounting for.
Right.
Assigning to TOD and five granite, and no other future projects, and no subdivisions.
Right.
Is only 0.1% of capacity.
Right.
I think that's very close to over full. So this is a significant alarm bell to me.
Now, does that include the account, accounting for infiltration that is always present in the system from groundwater?
There are some assumptions, there are some assumptions about it, and that's kind of a hidden variable. You can get more capacity by putting more INI, but that's not permanent. It degrades. So it's an ongoing process. And I don't know.
It's not, you know, that's not looked upon as something which degrades, I mean, you're, you're introducing something that the engineers have not introduced before. And we've already talked in terms of INI as being a, effectively speaking, a permanent solution, and that the amount that we lose right now is only because we haven't tried to deal with those storm, storm drain areas of the town. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you raise it as an issue. I don't know what percent that means. I think that that's something we need to have an answer on, given to us by the DPW, because to openly offer that as a reversal of the process, fine, but we ought to know what that means.
Fair enough. Okay.
Well, I guess this is a story that will be continued when there's a meeting of the planning, selectmen, DPW on this issue. So, okay.
Is that to be one big meeting, or are you going to have a working group of members?
Yeah. A meeting with all three groups.
All three boards?
Exactly.
Oh, really? Okay. Because I know a while ago, I was appointed as a liaison from the planning board on this, which is a position I'm happy to relinquish to somebody else. And the idea was that one member.
They never met.
What?
They never met.
No, they never met. There was never a meeting, so I never, but, you know, we could do that rather than.
I think they postponed that, 'cause they didn't have a current.
Right, they were waiting for this.
And now they finally got it. So now we have to, Mitch and Paul are trying to work out a meeting for September, October, and November. And this is gonna be one of our working, Kleinfelder.
Okay. Well, if anybody wants to take up the mantle on the liaison, I guess that you might want to, Tom. I'm perfectly happy to allow you to do that unless somebody else wants to do it, you know?
Okay. If we hate half an election about it, who wants to?
No, no, I mean, I didn't know whether, you know, there may be somebody else on the board who's dying to do this, but.
No.
No. Okay. So, good. All right. Any other member items? Herm, you had your, the article that you had.
Yeah, well, I, I handed this out, because this is a point by Baker with regards to the need for additional housing in the state. It was only to show that there are several points of view, or more than one point of view, and therefore, I wanted everyone to read it. Baker is in support of TOD and other such entities. So I don't see, I don't see what might be viewed as a shortage of anything at this particular point in time as a necessarily, necessary reason to think that we can't go forward. So, anyway, it's only for you to read right now, digest. We need to talk further, and we will talk further when we talk about TOD.
No, what's interesting is that he, I guess he criticized in this article Salem, because they rejected an overlay district like our TOD.
Yeah. Yeah, but I don't know what, I don't know what that overlay district looked like.
I don't know either, but he criticized that for not allowing that.
He did, yeah, he did, you know, I mean, he, he's an advocate, so.
So, the article that was in the Globe about this, it didn't, I didn't read all the way through this, but it didn't necessarily say TOD, it just said overlay district, and his point, it seemed to me his point was to remove the majority, to make it a simple majority rather than two-thirds.
That's true.
That, that was his.
That is his point.
Right, right.
And I'm not sure that I'm in favor of that, but.
No, no, I'm just saying, it was, it was even broader than just TOD.
Yeah.
It was, it was bigger, bigger thing.
Well, this was an overlay district that would have allowed housing.
No, no, I, I, yeah, I got it, yeah, yeah.
I have a comment. I happened to be talking to the mayor of Cambridge last weekend, and I asked him, what's their hottest issue, there's an upcoming election, he said affordable housing.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
And I asked him what, what percentage they currently have, and he says like between 14 and 15 percent, but parts of Cambridge are like 2 percent, so they've got their own mini Rockports within, within Cambridge.
Cambridge is really, really expensive.
So, but you're saying overall is 14 to 15 percent?
That's what he said. Unless I misunderstood, could he have said 40? I don't think so.
Well, it's easy enough to check up on that, I, I, I mean, I don't know, no, he wouldn't have said 40, never.
But there's a lot of multiple.
Yes.
Unit buildings, so, even though it's only taking up so much space, it's that many units, so.
Right.
Are you done with that?
Yeah, I'm done with that.
So, can I segue into, you guys had asked me to go and find out about the affordable housing that's in the new, you know, up where the Starbucks is now. So, in talking to several people, it turns out that they have 15 percent is their minimum by, by decree of the special council, Gloucester Special Council, that's a requirement of minimum of 15 percent.
For new developments.
For new developments.
For new developments, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's considered affordable, and then somebody else said to me attainable, and I couldn't really get exactly.
Wow.
Which one they were going by, but whatever it is, it doesn't matter for our discussion because it really was about, and I think Hank is the one that brought it up to me, if you just do 10 percent, you're never going to get to 10 percent because we're already behind, so 15 percent. Then he, this one person said to me, listen, the, the special council can also up that to 20 percent if they wanted to, but at the moment, 15 percent is the.
This is in Gloucester.
This is the Gloucester where the YMCA is.
Gloucester Cross.
Yeah, where the new buildings are going along like that.
But overall Gloucester is over 9 percent.
Is what?
Over 9 percent.
Over 9.
Overall, and Rockwood is high threes, 39, 38.
Yeah, high threes.
I don't think we're four there, we won't be four until Five Granite Street is in place.
Wow.
And, so, there's a big difference here, but, you know, Manchester's down around 4.2.
I would think so.
Essex is around 3.4, we're all in that range.
And then, Tim Good, who's, I've used him before as a reference, he's a Rockwood resident, he works for the, he works, he's one of our assessors, and he also works for the assessor in Gloucester, he mentioned that LaPage's, they have, they have several different things going on, but they have one thing that's just all apartments, and all of those are considered affordable by the state definition.
LaPage's?
It's a.
The old glue factory.
What?
It's over, if you go, yeah, if you go from the.
By the Heights OK Band over on Essex Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Go from Gloucester Harbor back towards 128, and you'll go right by it.
And that's, and that's 70 units, that's all affordable there, but there is some federal funding that helps make that affordable.
Yeah, that's, that's what affordable housing in the, in the true sense is, housing where the developers get tax credits for, for building.
Yeah.
That's, that's key.
Yeah.
For anybody wanting to do affordable housing.
But this thing with the special council, that doesn't take any of that consideration, you have to have 15 percent, and however you get it, that's your, that's your problem. So, if they got federal funding or state funding.
Well, that's maybe why they're talking affordable.
No, but the point is, yeah, but the point is that Gloucester is not giving any offset to make that happen.
Yeah, what do you mean?
In other words, the city of Gloucester is not taking on the financial burden of helping this developer create the affordable housing, that onus is on the developer.
Right, and, and the developers, it's not, not necessarily the local municipality, but it's federal tax credits.
Federal or state, yeah, and then, because of Toby's, one of Toby's comments, I specifically asked, and this special council already has rejected and will continue to reject somebody being able to buy their way out of it, in other words.
Right, should have rejected.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, when this Gloucester Crossing was developed, there was a big fight about percentage of affordable housing, and they wanted to try to do exactly what you said, when you say special council, you mean like a lawyer who represents?
No, no, this is Gloucester Special Council, it's like a, a small planning board that only deals with special development.
Yeah, that's, that's what we almost had down at the tool company that wanted to give us some money and do it, do it in some other location, that was.
Well, it, it's been done, in other words, Manchester did that recently, Manchester had five units developed by a builder, new housing, and that had no low-income housing in it, but he developed two other pieces of property either on the same street or nearby that were for low income.
At the same time, at the same time, yeah.
And, and that was viewed as acceptable.
Yeah, that's acceptable.
So, there are various approaches to.
That's acceptable, but when they say, well, we'll just give you some money and do it later, that's like.
Yeah, so that, right, Herm, so that's two different things, he did, he did actually create the affordable housing.
He did, yeah.
As opposed to just, yeah, I'll just pay a fee and not have affordable housing.
So, there are various approaches to this, you know, trade-offs.
But anyway, that was the end of my report.
Good, thank you. Anyone else for member items?
Yeah, you asked, and I sought out further information on 51 Marmion Way. And 51 Marmion Way is 4100 square feet, and falls outside of site plan review.
Yeah.
And.
You got my email too from.
I did, I, you know, you had, you had sought some information from Paul too, so I went there, I looked at the plans, interesting structure, and so I'm, excuse me, there's a crawl space and utility area underneath, but no basement, it's two stories in parts, and has a detached garage. The problem that I brought to Paul's attention is that the garage is only 10 feet from the property line.
Ooh.
And my contention is that the bylaws, and that's what I handed to you, that the bylaws clearly state that it's the total for all structures on the property.
Yeah.
That determines the side setbacks, and Paul is arguing, oh, no, no, that's not true, it doesn't say total, but it clearly says total in the way I read this.
Yes.
And therefore, the 10-foot side setback with regard to the garage should be 20.
Yes.
And, so, I want to hear your comments, you've got to tell me what you think.
Can I back up a little bit?
Sure.
So, what's the, what's the gross floor area of the house by itself without?
Oh, well, it's 3,300 feet, something in that order, and the garage is 868, so subtract 868 from 416, and, so, on the first floor it's 2177, on the second floor it's 1,300, so, let's see, that's, that's 3,400, 34, 35, 34, 3500.
And what's the garage?
And the garage is 868, so.
868, 868?
Yeah.
So, that's 4,268.
Yeah, 4,000.
When we put this together, we clearly.
We clearly said total.
Clearly wrote, wrote this to me in all billings, and he.
Not only, not only did you mean it that way, it says it that way.
It says it, I mean.
It's not even, it's not even open to interpretation.
Not the way I read it, you were apparently reading it the same way, and when 69 Marmion Way came in here, they specifically said that they put their garage, detached garage, 25 feet.
Exactly.
From property line.
Yeah.
So, it's not that he hasn't seen before him examples of what is, a reading and a determination correctly presented, so, I was a bit bothered this afternoon when I saw him, and.
See, did you actually talk with him about?
I talked with him, you know, and, oh, no, 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 it doesn't say total, to me, it clearly says total, and, so anyway.
This is exactly what we meant.
Sure, so, I'm.
Well, I mean, the way it reads is residential, single, two-family, and multiple dwellings, accessory buildings, and townhouses, it's not or, it's and, so that includes all of them.
Yeah.
Shall have the following side setbacks, and then it has for buildings, buildings plural with 4,000 to 5,999 square feet gross floor area, so, you know.
All you need to be a rocket scientist to know that it's total.
So, so then the question becomes, if this is bothersome to the rest of you, then what do we do? How do we proceed? And because it's an example of where he is making an interpretation which we think is in error, so.
Well, we have to deal with him.
Well, listen, I think the only thing we can do with him on this, because it's not something that's necessarily coming before us, but you think it would?
No, but, but, but I mean, is, is, is there not a mechanism, I mean, I don't know, this has gone before the ZBA, I dare say, I don't.
I don't think it has, why would it?
There's no reason to go before the ZBA.
No one's seen this.
So, so, then there's no, then there's no time limit on this, there is no 21-day review, period, and, so consequently, it's a matter of saying, hey, Paul.
That's wrong, and if we totally.
You know what, you know what I think we should do, Herm?
Okay.
Is contact the towns, because town's lawyer is kind of the, you know, person who's got the authority over all, all the people.
Sure.
And say, hey, listen, this is the way we read it, this is the way it should be read, and we need you to talk to our building inspector about this, because he's not following this.
I, if, if that's the way you want to handle it, that's fine, but I think that we need to bring the Paul's attention, that he has to be more careful in the way he.
Yeah.
Reads the language, although, as I said before, with regard to 69 Marmion Way, he's already seen a clear example of where the side setback was correct in relation to a detached garage, so.
You know, this is always an issue with building inspectors and not necessarily getting it, you know, so, I, I would, I would do that if that's.
Well, the other thing, I think, we have to write a letter to the selectman, because technically he works for them.
Well, right, and it does, there's nothing to say that a letter contacting him, I'll, I'll make sure that everyone appropriate knows about it.
Because he doesn't, he doesn't work for us.
No, he doesn't, we have no authority over him, so, and frankly, if we write a letter to him, he could just.
Of course.
Throw the cylinder apart.
What'd you say, that we need to?
We need to include the select.
Yeah, that's what you said, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Because he works for them.
No, he does.
Hank, he works for them, he doesn't work for us, yeah.
But I, I will do, I will do that.
Yeah.
This calls, this calls to their attention.
But it also would be a good idea, Jason, I agree, to make sure, is Amy still our, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so make sure that Amy.
I mean, I would like it if she.
Approve, approves.
If she went to him and said, hey, listen, this is what this says, and this is what you've got to do, that would be the best thing.
Well, how much is that going to cost us, so it might be better if she just wrote an opinion saying this is, that is what this means, and then we give it to the selectman. We just have to be careful at heart, Tom.
Well, I, I am always mindful for time, and you know how many, how much of a time I've used so far?
Yeah, but.
Too much.
I don't think the structure, I don't think the structure's up, and, and we're talking about the garage, we're not talking about a house that's already built.
Yeah.
And, so, I think that there's.
Better to, better to deal with it now, right.
Can be correct.
Absolutely.
They haven't poured the foundation for the garage yet?
Even if they had, I don't think the structure's up.
Foundation for the structure is done.
Pardon?
The foundation for the structure.
Oh, they've already.
I don't, I don't know whether the garage foundation is poured, I, I mean, I can get on there and check.
Obviously, we need to do this like right away.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, approval of bills.
Toby had.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, another, another member item, continuing from last week, and this is the last time to mention it, the climate crisis action meeting is next Wednesday.
25th.
The 25th.
Where is it again?
In Gloucester, and Hank, are you still interested?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so.
Anybody else from the board would like to go?
I'm going.
Oh, you are?
No, I, I want to hear, because my, my personal feeling is that there's not much you can do.
Right.
Because the money, the money that's going to be thrown at this is going to be thrown at it, and it's going to be directed towards New York City, it's going to be directed towards Boston, it's going to be directed towards every place except for the outlying places like Cape Ann, they're going to say, forget it, folks, you know, just pull back from the water, because the water's going to come in in certain areas, but they're not going to give us multi-millions of dollars, and it will be hundreds of millions of dollars to protect Lanes Cove, Plum Cove, Bear Skin Neck, any of the other places.
Long Beach.
Pardon?
Long Beach.
Any of it, hundreds of millions of dollars, it isn't going to happen, but, I'm, I'm interested in hearing what other people say.
Okay, if you want to attend, please register, I sent a link.
Oh, I haven't registered yet.
So.
Ah, okay.
Please do that by, I think tomorrow morning, they're going to, I don't know if they're going to close the registration, but they're making a booklet with the list of attendees, and so it'd be nice to be in that room.
All right, I will try to do that.
Anyone who wants to join, Denise is going.
I'll go, will you call me in a morning, early tomorrow, if I can, are you, are you going to talk to them tomorrow?
No.
Okay, I'll call Denise.
Say that again, we have to do what?
Yeah.
Oh, this, something.
Denise said she would send a email to the other, because I hadn't invited the whole board.
Yep.
A couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
And now, so, and Joe Perici's going, Jim Gardner's going.
6 o'clock, right?
It's actually, starts at 5:30 on the 25th.
I'll tell her what.
I do have it written down.
Yeah, excellent, all right, sorry to take the extra time, but it's nice that we get more people going.
It's one of these frustrating meetings.
Okay, anything else? Member item, no others, all right, administration approval of bills, we don't, I don't have any bills today, and lastly, public discussion, Toby?
A number of items because we can't talk during the meeting, the de minimis easements that you had such trouble with, it would have been helpful if you'd spoken up at the town meeting when we gave away the town meeting's, you know, right to decide on them, not that the public tend to be well-informed, but at least it's a safeguard, and those who might inform themselves have a chance. You know, I spoke against it, and the finance committee and the selectmen got it through by about six votes on the basis of something that Wally Hess said that was not the truth, that they, they, the finance committee could not advise the selectmen on the easements unless that passed, anyway, I'm still sore about that, and obviously, the DPW needs to be consulted, you know, underground utilities, they were left out of the process that, as it's currently set up for approving the easements, they should be advising as well as you and the finance committee, so the whole thing ought to be revisited, and perhaps you could advise the selectmen on that. As for the Kleinfelder hearing, it's not going to do much good unless you, you have both the current, you know, proposal and the past one there, to compare the two and the maps, you know, what, you know, the DPW declined to give me that you're referring to has no maps in it, and without the maps, it's meaningless, obviously, okay? Then you were talking about, about the affordable housing and Gloucester and so forth. It would be really helpful, it might be, to find out what towns had met the, the 10 percent. Tom said Cambridge 15 percent. Well, there were some small towns, I seem to remember and can't swear to it, I could have it wrong, that Wenham, of all places, met the 10 percent. So it would be helpful to find out what other towns that are roughly comparable to ours in terms of population, not out in the far.
What difference does that make?
What?
What difference does it make about the overlay?
Overlay?
What difference, what difference does it matter? What other towns have, have 10 or not percent? Well, we're not close to it and we're trying to find ways to get close to it.
What, the, the way it would be useful, you know, it might be, at least worth looking, would be to find out how they went about it and how they succeeded.
I don't think so. Because not, there's very few towns that are like Rockport. This is why I didn't bother doing this because it's, we're so unique. We have such valuable property in such large areas of town. We have no industry. There's a lot of things that are a lot different about Rockport than any other town.
Toby's just making a suggestion.
Okay.
We don't, you have to follow it.
And all of my suggestions are ignored as a matter of course, so what difference does it?
You know what? That's not true either, Toby. I have commented several times and this, just at that report, I commented, the comment from you I took into consideration. So that's not true either.
Yes, and talk about the climate meeting. I believe there's another one coming up, the one that Denise was eager to have and they're getting somebody from Coastal Zone Management and you don't even have to go to Gloucester. I believe that's next week, is it not?
In the community house on Thursday at 7:00 PM. It's Catherine Glenn, Coastal Zone Management.
Yes, and for those who are skeptical, such as Herman, you know, that deals with local issues, notably, I believe Pebble Beach and Long Beach and where else, Tom?
Cape Edge.
Cape Edge. So, you know, that certainly is relevant.
Yeah. Thank you, Toby. Any other public discussion? See you in a sec.
Yeah, Zee Sapla, 92 Granite Street again. I've looked at this, two hours ago or so, I commented on the comments during a public hearing and I asked the question about whether you will, will remain firm on limiting a member of the public to one three-minute comment period.